Progress.
The floor is yours.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Good morning. The City of Boston's zoning board of appeal hearing for April 25th, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. This information is, uh, the information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside, alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comments. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. All right. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Here.
Mr. Aiken.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Good morning. Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, here, present.
Morning. Good morning. Mr. Shepherd.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board present.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm present.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning, folks. First item on the agenda is the approval of the here, um, hearing minutes from March 14th, 2024, 2023, trying to say?
All good. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we, on the agenda, we have the extensions for 9:30. First, two being companion cases, first being BOA 1-805-934 with the address of Three Snelling Place, and the second being case BOA 805-933 at the same address of Three Snelling Place. This is the fourth request for an extension, which is due to expire on April 27th of this year. If approved, the new expiration date will be April 27th, 2024.
Mr. Farullo.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. William Farullo, on behalf of Rochelle Luongo, trustee of Three Snelling Place. This is a three-unit family building, not then, that's been in the family for three generations. Since we have seen you last, we have submitted all revised plans to ISD. In turn, we have also obtained all additional requested information and city department approvals, with one exception, and that's BPDA's review and approval. Plans were submitted to them in March. We're still waiting for the review and approval so that we can resubmit to ISD. So we're close to the finish line, and hopefully we'll receive an extension so we can finish that.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Uh, like to make a motion to grant an extension to April 27th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
I guess I do, uh, sorry, we jumped ahead to the vote pretty quickly. I didn't really have the understanding of why this is the fourth request. Didn't feel I'd quite had the chance to get that in. But you can continue on the, on the, on the.
BTD has not reviewed. That's, that was the reason. Is that your question?
For being the fourth extension?
Uh, fourth, I don't know. If that's, if you, if you're trying to stop the, if you want to stop me to ask that question?
I, I guess I'd just like to hear that quickly. I didn't, I didn't feel that we had enough, I did have the opportunity to hear why it's the fourth extension.
Mr. Farullo.
Uh, yes, just briefly. Initial extensions primarily were due to COVID issues and resulted both in a change of family members involved in the plans and the change of the plans. So we went through that process at least on two occasions, resulting in these various delays. And as mentioned, we are now at the point where our last step is to receive the BPDA approval and then obtain our permit.
Okay, thank you. If you want to continue, I can, I'll, I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 101-6543, the address being 70 Utah Street. This is the second request for extension due to expire May 8th of this year. If approved, the new expiration date will be May 8th, 2024.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Lawrence Catino, representing the owner of the property. My, have a business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. We're requesting a further one-year extension. The original extension was based on COVID. And then the next extension that we're requesting relief for was there was a death in the family and some family illnesses going on with this issue. But we're hoping to have all of the plans submitted to ISD within this year to change from a two-family to a three-family.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve extension to May 8th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 101-9227, the address being 18 Cottage Street. This is the first request for extension, which will expire on May 21st of this year. If approved, the new expiration date will be May 21st, 2024. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mary Kate Campbell with Rego in Tuscano. The owner of 18 Cottage has just run into some delays in financing as well as design review. Therefore, we are requesting the one-year extension.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? May I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
Yes, quickly, what, what is the status of the design review? When's that expected to be complete?
The owner is prepared to move forward, I think, in about the next four to five months, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an extension to May 21st, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 113-1510, the address being 35 Cushing Ave. This is the first request for extension, which will expire on May 7th of this year. If approved, the new expiration date will be May 7th, 2024.
Mr. Gammie.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair. I'm Peter Gammie, 35, 35 Cushing Ave, a homeowner. We're just asking for a one-year extension due to financial obligations and, uh, those have been resolved. And so now we're just looking for him to finalize the structural plan and hopefully start construction as far.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to extend to May 7th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 932-844, the address being 192 Gladstone Street. This is the second request for extension, due to expire on April 30th of this year. If approved, the new expiration date will be April 30th, 2024.
Ms. Clifford.
Yes, hi, good morning. Yeah, we were just wondering if we could extend it for another year, just, you know, for unforeseen circumstances, um, we need to extend. We did have a developer and he backed out, unfortunately.
So do you feel you can find a new?
We have, yeah, we've a couple of other, but, you know, other developers very interested in our property, but unfortunately, it's going to expire and we just needed to get an extension.
Any questions from the board?
What, what's the project?
Oh. Um, we have a, uh, it was basically zoned as a two-family and we are planning on, you know, um, like a, a five unit.
Okay.
This is the first extension?
This is our second one. The first one was due to COVID and, you know, unforeseen circumstances.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Motion to grant mention until April 30th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks a lot.
Last on the 9:30 extension cases is case BOA 113-0362 with the address of 59 Chelman Street. This is the first request for extension, which is due to expire on June 22nd of this year. Approved, the new expiration date will be June 22nd of 2024.
Mr. Disipio, are you on?
Yes.
Great.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe Disipio, owner of 59 Chelman Street. I'm seeking an extension to our BOA case. We are in the process of, of moving forward with a demo permit. We could then move forward to the EDA for design review and continue forward with the project.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Uh, yes, you said you're moving forward into design review after you do the demo?
Uh, well, they wanted a demo permit in hand before they looked at the review of the, of the building.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve extension to June 22nd, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank.
Next, we'll move on to the ground with groundwater conservation overlay district, scheduled for 9:30. The case under this category is BOA 144-0379 with the address being 5 Juruclan Place. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes.
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, David Nielsen. I'm the applicant.
Yes, can you just walk us quickly through your request?
Yes, it's, uh, the site is currently a vacant lot. I'm proposing a single-family house. It received ISD approval with no violations other than the groundwater conservation overlay district. Submitted plans to Boston Water and Sewer and had them approved. I submitted a no-harm letter from the engineer as well as Boston Water and Sewer Commission, letter.
Mr. Semenelli, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board. Please, Mr. Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I'm just having a little difficulty with my camera. Sorry about that. I am here, I'm listening, but you're not going to be able to see me for a minute.
You're stand. Thank you.
No worries.
Next, we have building code case, scheduled for 9:30 AM. Case is BOA 144-5868, the address being 210 West Springfield Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Is Mr. McCarthy with us?
Raise your hands here, let me just. Oh, yeah, Greg McCarthy, one second. Greg, I'm making the panelist. You can just approve it when it pops up on your screen. And you'll be able to unmute yourself and state what you're looking to do.
Hello, everybody. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. So, uh, we're here for today for 210 West Springfield Street. This is, uh, the, the variance that we're seeking is for roof deck access. We had been to the ZBA about four or five months ago, and it was, uh, our plans were approved with a proviso to change the access from, uh, to the roof deck from headhouse to a bubble hatch. So we did that, but when we changed it, it changed from a zoning violation to a building code violation. So we wanted to come back and request relief on that, uh, which is access to the roof hatch is by a bubble hatch, which is not allowed by zoning code, uh, by building code, my apologies.
That's okay.
No problem. And then the other revision we made is we had, uh, big rear decks off the back of the building, uh, which we reduced down to five feet. I think the request was six feet, but after we talked to the Southside Neighborhood District, they, they had recommended five feet, so we're actually, we have five feet on the rear decks now and changed the access to bubble hatch for the roof deck.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, uh, as we move into the hearing, scheduled for 9:30 AM, at this time, we'll ask if there are any requests for, um, deferral or withdrawals at this time.
Please raise your hand if you're in a, in the attendee section and you're looking for a deferral.
Hearing none. The first case would be BOA 143-0845 with the address of 143 to 143 C Tremont Street. Is the applicant or the, or representative present?
Uh, good morning, I am. This is Mike Ross, attorney with a law firm at Prince Lobel at One International Place. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, I'm here with the architect on this project, Alida Alba. What we have here is a proposal to erect five new townhomes with nine parking spaces in this 1F 5000 sub-district of Brighton, which is very close to the Newton border, right on the left of the building, to the left of the building. In this slide here, and what you're looking at, uh, close up, is the rendering, the building on the left with the tree in front of it, that is 143 Tremont. And that is what we are proposing, uh, on this lot that's 11,230. It's a long, narrow lot that goes all the way back. I'll show you in a moment. It's remarkably similar to this building to the right there, which is also five units, was built about 10 years ago, pretty much has the exact same, um, property size, and it's around that 11,000-plus square footage. Just below this image here, there's a, kind of a rendering, just to give you a sense of what we're trying to do here. The, uh, the, and you can see that long, narrow lot that slopes upwards as it goes back. The gray or the, the hatched, uh, black hatches here, that is the original building. That's, that's up today. That's a two-family building. And what we're proposing is that light blue outline there to allow for the five townhouses and then, you know, the parking next to them. If you go to the next slide, I can give you a little more context as to where this, where this is. Yep, this is good. So you can actually see the Newton border right there on the left. So we're, we're pretty much the last house before Newton. And then there's that long, narrow lot. And then you can see the, that companion lot. It's, you know, not, it just happens to be next to us. It's not the same ownership. It's just, interesting, it's, it's around the same size and a similar, uh, similar building, massing, what's called. Uh, next slide, please. And here you have now the site plan. So what, what we have here is, um, you're looking at the ground floors of each of the five townhouses, which will have its own parking. We've moved trash into the actual units at the request of the community process. You see these four parking spaces to the right of the building. So together, that makes nine, which is the required number by zoning. And, um, that fence you see at the bottom, we've agreed to install that along the top of this plan here, uh, just to provide a fence between us and one other, I guess there's one other building, uh, one other residence to the left of us there. So we'll be putting up that, um, that fence there for privacy. Next slide, please.
All right, quick question?
Is the, is it one curb cut that accesses all that parking or how many curb cuts do
you have?
Yeah, the existing curb cut, just one.
Thank you.
Yep. The, um, and so then here you have just a close-up of what you were looking at on the first floor, but now, now you see the second floor just below it. And the second floor, what you see there is one, one of the bedrooms, the kitchen, the living room, one of the bathrooms, and there's a balcony off each of the, um, bedrooms that there. And just to give you a sense that these, these units, they're about 2,000 square feet, so they range from 1979 square feet to 2,256 square feet, and each are a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. Uh, next slide, please. And now this would be the third floor. So this is where you'd have two more bedrooms and two more baths. And the next slide here, I'll give you a little more, I think the elevations will give you some, some sense of what we're doing here. So, um, the, the upper elevation is your view from Tremont Street, um, what you're looking at. And then the lower is the, uh, the right side of the building along the driveway, um, where the garage entrance is and the main entrance for each unit are, parking in the rear. The next slide, please. And this is the reverse elevation, so you, the upper one is the back of the building, uh, it's from, from view, from the backyard. And then the left side of the building is the lower. And each one of those doors there empties out to a patio, an individual patio for each of the townhouses, you know, for you, for, where you could grill or, or do, you know, have a little patio area right there. Uh, next slide, please. So these are just some context images. You saw the one in the upper left. The one in the, um, upper right shows, you know, shows the building from the other side. The middle view, what you see, what you're seeing there is, um, our building is the one with the tree in front of it. That's the existing two-family that's there today. Uh, the lower left, it's on the right side of the street now. It's across the street from those, from those commercial, um, It's across the street from those commercial buildings, again, where the big tree is. And then the lower right, the lower right corner is actually a pretty good context photo, if you want to just zoom in really quickly. That just shows you kind of what's going on in this area. There's a very large multifamily building to the right of that kind of companion lot building I mentioned earlier. And then the proposed building that we're talking about is the one that has that tree in front of it. And there you can see, Madam Chair, that existing curb cut that's there today. And next slide, please. I think there's just one more slide. And that just gives you, you know, kind of renderings of what we're proposing here. Just really quickly, let me just walk you through the relief we're seeking today. So it's a use, as I mentioned, we're looking to do five townhouses in that 1F 5000, townhouse being forbidden and multifamily being forbidden. And because we're creating the additional four parking spaces, those parking spaces are considered forbidden too. The dimensional regulations, FAR in this part of the city is .5. We are at 1.1. The building height, even though we have a mansard roof, we are still at three floors. And in this part of the district, it's a two-and-a-half-floor requirement. We are actually below, however, the height restriction of 35. We're at 32 and a half for our height. On the side yard, we meet one of the side yards, which is 12 feet. So we have 22 feet on one side. But on the left side, we only have a five-foot side yard setback. Because the location of the main front door is for only one of the units facing Tremont Street, and the other four units are not facing the main frontage, we were cited for that as well. And finally, the front yard requirement for this section of the district is 20. We are at 14.5 for the front yard. Just on community process, which you're about to hear, of course, from ONS, we did go in front of BAIA and were approved there. I'll pause there, Madam Chair, and see if there are any questions.
Mr. Collins, any questions on the plans?
No, no, the drawings are adequate.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, one question. So it looks like the design has so that everyone has a little patio and a balcony. Is there, you've got four parking spaces and a retaining wall, so is there open space for use in the rear? Or is that essentially inaccessible? I'm just looking at sort of the site design and seeing that this is, you know, very... You have a building that was recently at 99 Tremont, I guess, that has a slightly lower than a one-and-a-half parking ratio, from what I understand. So I'm just trying to understand some of the site plan layout and considerations for the relief request.
Yeah, we, it's a low retaining wall, Mr. Aiken. And so it is an accessible yard. I mean, there is some pitch to it. But there is a lot of yard with this project because of the large size of the lot itself. And we were not cited for open, you know, a violation for the open space. So, you know, that plus, I think, the individual unit balconies and the patios, you know, create ample opportunity for access to that open space.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can you talk, yeah, can you talk a little bit about the landscape plan? I may see a fair amount of green, but is there a landscape architect working with you? And what do you intend to do here?
Yeah, I'm not sure we, we didn't bring on a landscape architect on this one. We are not taking down any trees for the construction of this project, including that front tree on the street tree, of course. It's not our tree to take down, it's the city of Boston. But we're not disrupting any trees. All the plantings you see around the perimeter of the building will be bushes. And, you know, our architect is on the call. Alida could probably talk more about what she's planning to do there. But, you know, other than the retaining wall and those bushes, that's really the extent of what we're doing landscape-wise. There'll be a pervious, the parking area you see is a pervious material. So, and that was part of the community process. So, you know, the groundwater will go right back into the ground through that. That was something that came up as well. And then I think we added a little bit of green, just even to the front of each of the unit. You see a little bush there. So that was done deliberately to try to create a little bit more green.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, let's open it to public testimony.
Yes, so, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Alston Brighton Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, deferring to the judgment of the board, but here to testify that S2B community engagement process for this property, the applicant had an Butters meeting and also met with the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, the local civic for this area. We didn't really hear back any significant opposition from the community or from Butters, with the exception of one of the residents of the current property, who did not really understand the process and the timeline associated with it. But I understand from the developer that they were able to connect with that individual and talk things through with him and help him with his understanding. With that said, we'll defer to the judgment of the board as always, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza.
Okay, we do have one raised hand here. Annabella?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We voted to support this project. We feel that this is a great location to add quality, family-sized housing. And they have really put care to adding more landscaping and the primary payers and everything. So we really feel it's a great location. And it is consistent with the existing housing and it complements the building that was approved by this board probably 10 years ago. That pretty much matches it, except this project actually will give us more green and really make it a great family housing size for people to live in. Thank you.
Mike Nebraska? Looking to testify, okay. Lowered his hand. I have no additional raised hands, thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve with the BPDA's sound review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1443147. The address being 309 Summit Avenue. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. Attorney for the project proponents, which in this case is Josh Zakar. And Mike Flynn are the project proponents. Also with us is the architect, David O'Sullivan. This is a proposal to demolish an existing building at 309 Summit Avenue in Brighton, which is at the corner of Alston Street. Here is the location. It's basically one block down from Commonwealth Avenue in an area across the street and along Alston and Summit Ave, of multifamily residential structures, large brick apartment buildings. And this proposal is to align with those types of buildings as well. Next slide. Again, here is just an aerial view of the site location, one block from Com Ave at the intersection of Summit Ave and Alston. Next slide. Here's some photographs of the existing context of the building. On the left are photographs of the existing structure, which is proposed to be demolished. On the lower right is the large multifamily building across the street, diagonally across the street from the subject property. Next slide. Again, just more photographs of the existing context. Lower right is the rear of the existing property with the multifamily across the street and houses across Summit Ave on the other photos. Next slide. Here's a rendering of the proposed new structure. So to the right-hand side of the screen is Summit Avenue. And that is the front door, the lobby of the building. It's a three-story building on the front side on Summit Ave. But you can see the slope of the land going down Alston Street. Then in the back, where we tuck the garage under the building, it reads as a four-story building in the back. But it fronts on the corner of Summit Ave as a three-story building. Next slide, please. And this is the rear with the curb cut for the entrance to the garage at the lower level, with parking for nine spaces. And it is proposed to be a nine-unit building with three units on each floor. And each of the units are three-bedroom sized units. Important to note that this project started many years ago as a very different proposal under Small Project Review with the BPDA. It was a larger building with a higher unit count and somewhat smaller units. But through the community review process, we were moved in the direction of reducing the size of the building, reducing the number of units, and increasing the size of the units, which is how we ended up with this proposal. Next slide. Incorporating some balconies on the units for some outdoor space. This is the front of the building on Summit Avenue. During the Small Project Review process, there was a desire to keep the front of the building setback from Summit and create this nice open space for the entry, front door of the building. Next slide. This is the lower level showing the parking garage with nine spaces, four compact spaces, five standard-sized spaces, and a bicycle storage room with space for 16 bicycles. Mechanical systems and a trash room and the elevator pit. Next slide, please. Typical floor plans, on the left is the first floor plan. You can see there are larger-sized units, three units per floor. On the right is the typical second and third floor plans. Next slide. These are elevations, front on the right. Front is the 309 Summit Ave entrance. And the side is one side of the building with the lower level not shown on this side. Next slide, please. And these are elevations with the bottom right showing the rear of the building or the garage entrance. And three floors of residential above. Next slide. And that's it. One item I would like to note for the record, Madam Chair, is that on the plans and the refusal letter, the FAR is noted as 2.97. That's a math error. The actual proposed FAR is 1.48, significantly lower than what's shown on the plans. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and take any questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions from the board?
Can you walk us through the violations?
Sure thing. So the required parking is 1.75 per dwelling unit, which would be 16 spaces. We have 1.0, here we go. We have nine spaces, which is 1.1. Given the transportation location of Commonwealth Avenue a block away, I think that's sufficient and provided the 16 bike storage. Traffic visibility is cited. It is a corner lot, the corner of Summit Ave and Alston Street. But because the building is pulled back from Summit Ave, there's more than sufficient visibility for cars coming in either direction. It is in a 3F subdistrict, so the multifamily use is forbidden. But as shown, there are lots of, the predominance of buildings in this particular area are larger multifamily residential buildings. Additional lot area per dwelling unit is 2,000, so that would require 18,000 square feet. This is a 9,200-square-foot lot. FAR max is .8, 2.97, which is not correct. The actual FAR is 1.48. Building height was cited for proposed four stories. Again, three stories in the front, four stories in the back because of the slope of the land. The height in feet max is 35, we're at 39. Usable open space, 58, 50 would be required. We have 2,970 with the introduction of the balconies and actually leaving a lot of the lot area, about 50% of the lot area remains as open. The front yard required is 20 feet. And that is about 6.5 on the Alston Street side, but more than sufficient on the Summit Street side with that desired setback to create the little park area in the front. And the rear yard requirement is 30. And at that point, the proposal is 26 and 4 inches. And those are about it.
Is there currently a curb cut?
There is. So the curb cut utilizes the existing curb cut, which will be the entrance to the garage at the lower level.
Okay. Mr. Hampton, can you walk us through your recommendation? If you're on?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The BPDA board recommended denial without prejudice. The number of violations is excessive. We feel that the proposal is excessive. Also, in speaking to what Mr. LaCasse had mentioned about the multifamily dwellings across the street, kitty corner to this project, the zoning district, sub-district line does go down Summit Ave. So those buildings are zoned, MFR, for multifamily residential uses. This is Zone 3 Family. And we just feel that the project itself is too big for this lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, does this fall, I don't know if this would also be a question for Mr. Hampton, but does this fall in any kind of planning areas that have been underway or looking yet?
No, this is...
No zoning changes, obviously, but is it part of the planning area?
No, Mr. Aiken, it doesn't.
Okay. One question there, looks like at least historically, sorry, it's for the proponent, there is a very large tree on the site. Is that still there at this point in time?
It is not. There are, the tree was causing significant damage to the existing building and the tree has been removed.
Okay. So is there a plan for any new trees as part of this development? It looked like there was a bunch of maybe shrubbery, I couldn't tell. I didn't recall if there were.
Yes, and as part of, when it was an application for Small Project Review, there was a lot of work done on that front area along Summit Ave, including setting the building back to create that open space in the front. So we're sticking with that direction.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam, should I have a question for the proponent?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned, during your presentation, that the project initially had a larger number of units. How many units did you propose initially? And what were the reasons why you decided to reduce the unit count?
Yep, so, Josh Zakar, my C is raising his hand, he's the project proponent. Do you want to jump in on that?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. I think, you know, initially, we were at 19 units, which did receive some significant support from the community through conversations with Director Butters. They felt that that was too large of a project for this site. We worked in concert with them to reduce the size and create larger units, to be family-sized units. We have maintained that green space along Summit Ave, knowing that there's a real need for that in the community. Excuse me. And I've talked to Park's apartment about installing and, you know, maintaining and paying for street trees along Alston Street, recognizing that's really important for this community. You know, I know myself, my partner Mike Flynn, have both lived on this street in years past and are really committed to this area and know how important adding that green space is. And we felt that, you know, being in a harmonious existence with our Director Butters, who I believe have sent letters of support for this project at this point, was really critical to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm looking at the street view and I see that there are several multifamily buildings across the street and down the street, so I was just thinking about losing those units. And you went from 19 to nine. So technically, the city is losing two IDP units with that reduction. So I was just wanting to point out to that, that there's multifamily buildings across the street already. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Valencia. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Excuse me, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Alston Brighton Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services.
Mr. Mendoza, you're coming in and out. Mr. Mendoza?
A number of years, Brighton Alston from Social Liaison, testified to the community of the optimization stances up to this project. And with that said, we will defer to the judgment of the board.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mendoza, we did not hear you.
I'm sorry, was I, could you hear me?
No, we could not. No, we could not, nor see you. If you could start over, that would be great. Thank you. All right, he's, okay, Mr. Mendoza's approaching. Yep. Let's proceed. I think he needs to restart.
So Greg, can you say your name and address for the record, please, once I'm muted? Then Annabella. Greg might be having some connectivity issues. Annabella, do you want to try?
Yep. Madam Chair, members of board, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. This project has gone through a lot of iterations since 2021. And with concerns from the neighbors of it being too large, they have reduced the project to this size. This is how the neighbors there feel comfortable. That area does have three very large projects surrounding it on Washington Street and Conlonth Ave, and that brought a lot of concerns to the neighbors on the size. And they are happy with this size being at nine units. So the BIA voted to support this. Thank you.
Thanks. No additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. As you heard, this project previously went through a BPDA-led community process where after hearing concerns from neighbors, the project was dramatically changed. And over the course of many years, they've met many times with the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, which is a local civic for this area. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
No, just yes. No.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? None, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to approve the project with the BPDA design review. Because just looking at the context, the project already lost 10 units to accommodate the feedback from the Butters. And there is a multifamily unit buildings across the street in next block as well. So I think the project is still delivering nine units that unfortunately are not income restricted, but still we are building some affordable housing. For that reason, my motion is to approve the project with the BPDA design review.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You.
Next case is BOA 1431895 with the address of 184 Wren Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Good morning to Madam Chair and the board. My name is Derek Rubenoff. Derek Rubenoff, architect. I'm here to present. Architect for the project. With me is a nutback nutball from our office and also our client, Mike Donkey. Mike and Aaron have a growing family, and they're looking for a little more space in their existing single-family home in West Roxbury. They have family roots in the neighborhood. In fact, Mike's in-laws live next door on the left, and seeking to add about 750 square feet to this house. So it's existing single-family in a single-family 6,000 zone. And we are proposing to add some space to the third floor, which is currently attic storage space. And then we're adding a small increase to the footprint of the house. If we look at the, that plan right there, yeah, so the back right-hand corner of the house on the site plan there on the left, on the left there, yeah, you can see there's a little bathroom that we're adding on the ground level, and that's the only change in the footprint of the house. And then on the second level, we are increasing the area on the right side for some additional bedroom space. And then on the third floor, adding additional bedroom space up there. So our violations, as you can see on the top right there in the section, we are, we have a violation for a number of stories. The building height will conform in terms of feet. There's no extension of the building height. However, the third floor attic space will become a third story per the zoning code. And we also are cited for a side yard setback, as you could see in that site plan a moment ago, that we have about five and a half feet on the side yard that's existing. And the way we're filling out the back right corner of the building will maintain that five foot six, but it's an extension of an existing nonconformity. The other violation that is mentioned is FAR. And we are going from, let's see, we are going from, we allowed a maximum .4, the existing is .43, and we are proposing to increase the FAR to 0.58. So if we look at the illustrations, I think it's on page 14, 15 of that. Yeah, there we go. So on the left, you can see the existing photos. So on the top left, that's the front of the house. And then to the right of that, in the center of the top, is just a model of the existing that you're seeing in the photograph. And in the top white, you can see how we are filling out the right side of the house. And we're extending that existing smaller gable that's in line with the main part of the roof. We're extending that up to the existing overall ridge of the roof. And then we're extending that second-floor front dormer to the right. So the idea is to have the addition look like it was always there. And then in the rear of the house, we're getting that additional space on the third floor on that second row there. You can see that there's already an existing dormer on the second floor that goes across the rear, and we're adding another dormer higher than that to get that additional bedroom space on the third level. So most of the addition won't be visible. Most of the added space won't be visible from the street. And what is visible from the street will maintain the integrity of the design of the existing house.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. To speak on the community process, our office had the homeowner circulate a flyer to a Butters. No concerns were raised from a Butters, and we received several letters of support, which we forwarded to this board. The applicant then went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted to support the proposal as well. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council of Lash, Michael Flaherty, the Council is on record in support.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Collins? Is Mr. Collins with us?
Yes, sorry, I am.
Okay. Are you yes or no?
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA 1432793, the address being 23 Regis Road. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes. Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Derek Joyner. I'm with Joyner Development, 119B Rantham Street, Dorchester, Mass. 02124.
Sorry, Mr. Joyner, just real quick, Mr. Collins, are you recusing yourself on this one?
I am recusing myself. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I was trying to figure out this video thing at the same time, but yes, I need to recuse.
Thank you. So it's a six-member board. Please continue, Mr. Joyner.
Okay. We're proposing to build a three-family home that will have three off-street parking spaces in the rear of the property. These units will be marketed as condominiums in order to provide homeownership opportunity. This proposal, it only has two zoning violations that we are seeking relief for. The first one is use forbidden, since we're proposing to build a three-family in a 2F sub-district that created a violation. The second violation is the building height excessive for the stories only. It's required to have two and a half stories, but like the other three families that are on the street, we're proposing three stories. Now, as shown in the proposed plan, Unit 1 has 1,440 square feet of living space. Unit 2 has 1,430 square feet of living space. And Unit 3 has 1,546 square feet of living space. All three of these units have.
There's the numbers. Go ahead, be careful. I'm sorry, can you move them? Thank you. Let's see. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Joyner, please proceed.
All three units have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, an open floor plan, and DDA storage space in the basement. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that the members of the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can you talk a little bit about the landscaping and whether, is this fair amount of paving here? Do you intend to have permeable pavers?
Yes, there's sufficient, if you can go to the second drawing, the slide, you can see the green space on page two. Oh, there we go. There we go. There's plenty of green space, so we meet the code requirement for that, as well as the driveway. We have the parking spots. It would be a paved yard. So to answer your question, we have enough space for that.
Yeah, my question was whether the pavers are permeable, so that water kind of seeps through them.
Okay, it's asphalt, so we're going to have a drainage system so that it's pitched into the drainage system in the driveway to collect all the water so it can drain, you know, carefully.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd like to see permeable pavers on these projects as well, so we'd like you to consider that. Can you just speak a little more to the landscaping, what you intend to do with that green space?
Well, it would be grass on the left side of the building. If you can scroll down to the next slide, Jessica? It would be grass on the left side. We will have some shrubbery, and of course, BPDA would probably more than likely be to their review, and they'd definitely go over the landscape. And so we'll have a more detailed landscape and drawing to show exactly the trees and the shrubberies that would be on the green space.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held at Butters meeting on March 2. The applicant then went on to meet with the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, which eventually voted to support the proposal with several provisos. I believe we provided that letter to this board. There were some discussions around the parking layout shown on the plans that indicate that the three parking spaces take up open yard space at the back porch of the building. There were also conversations with the Woodhaven, Culbert, and Regis Neighborhood Association, which is active in the area, and I do not believe the applicant has had a chance to present to the Woodhaven, Culbert, Regis Neighborhood Association at this time, although they have been in contact with them. With that, we defer. Thank you.
Mr. Newman, what were the provisos from the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council?
I'm doing my best to try to parse through. I believe there was some concerns around parking and the building size.
All right, okay.
Madam Chair, do we have their letter? Mr. Stembridge, do we have their letter? The provisos?
We have, we have one letter from point, we have one from point, which was regards to parking, yes, and some other comments that were made. I'm sorry, that's such a question.
That's okay. Let's proceed with Mr. Arroyo's office.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey, sir, from Councilor Ricardo Arroyo's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. To echo Connor, we do have the, we just wanted to point out the provisions that the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council had laid out. I can email those to Connor, and then he can send them your way, if that's okay. I'm having trouble trying to copy and paste them into the chat at the moment. But we want to be on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council of Lash, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Councilor Arroyo's office, as well as the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, Councilor to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Thomas Mann from Councilman Perry Murphy's office. Councilman Murphy, at this time, would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Cindy?
Good morning, members of the board, Madam Chair. Cindy Regis from the office of Councilor Wutile Zan. She would also would like to go on record in support.
I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to have BPDA design review and attention to permeable pavers and landscaping.
Do you want to make that a proviso or just?
Yes, with a proviso that they use permeable pavers, and the BPD design review will focus on sort of, you know, exterior and landscaping.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Seven.
Mr. Collins, oh, no, sorry. Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Joyner.
Thank you, members of the board. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. Case BOA 1352114, with that address being 6 Winter Street. And companion case to that is BOA 1352108, with that address being 10 Winter Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chair and all the members. It's myself here, Tophick Camoli and Toy. We're both the owners of the 10 Winter Street and 6 Winter Street. As you might already know, so the area has gotten a little bit busy and there's a little bit of traffic around. And since we do not have an open curb to park our cars, we have decided to jointly file this permit request to get our cars parked, and this is what we are here for today. We have received a lot of support from the Meeting House Hill Association, as well as, I think I'll let Ashley speak to that. And so that's what we're here for today. So both buildings are showing on both sides, and what we're really asking for is a single curb cut that will allow cars to park tandemly in between the buildings. Buildings being 10 Winter on the right, 6 Winter on the left. And that's what the layout of the plans look like. So we've gotten this from a certified surveyor. So.
Thank you. Is Mr. D'Amico on by chance, or Mr. Stembridge, do you have any notes from him?
So I.
Madam Chair?
Sorry, Mr. D'Amico seems to be on, yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, all of D'Amico, BTD. I've worked with the applicant to adjust the parking plan because the way it was originally proposed, it was front yard parking, which is something that we don't approve. But he did push them back, and it does work from an operational standpoint. And as far as greenery is concerned, I'll leave that up to the BPDA. But from an operations perspective, BTD approves this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I?
Sorry, one quick question. Can I just understand?
I do... Sorry, one quick question. Can I just understand, is the sidewalk essentially about four feet wide at the point where the... Between the curb cut and then the property line? Is that what the level part of the sidewalk will be? And I don't know if Bob's there to weigh in on that being acceptable?
From what I can see, the width of the sidewalk is, I think, six point one, six foot one inch, which is appropriate. And it does work. The curb cut has to be fourteen feet because it allows more appropriate maneuverability.
Okay, so the width, the width is about six feet still after the curb cut between the property line and the street?
No, no, it's a six foot one inch now. But when you put in the curb cut, that'll be reduced to like a four-foot width. And again, that's something that is pretty common, and that's why I haven't walked us into it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ashley Holmes from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Some background information on the community process. The office held in the Butters meeting late of 2022. Members in the Butters of the Meeting House Hill Civic Association showed support and approve of this shared driveway. No significant impact on the community, with that we defer to the board at this time.
Any other raised hands?
I'm knowing each and all raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse from the next case.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
And this case will be BOA 1397632, with the address being 31 Downer Avenue. Is the applicant or representative present?
Mr. Brown on? Yes, yep, his hand is raised. One second. Making them panelists.
Can you answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Alexander Brown. This proposal is for 31 Downer Ave., Dorchester, Mass. 02125. I am proposing to change my existing two-family into a three-family with three parking spaces in the rear. I will live on... I will live in Unit 1, and the other two units will be provided for home ownership opportunities. I am seeking relief for the following violations. One, three-family detached dwelling forbidden. Two, restricted roof structure district. Three, use forbidden. Four, NDOD review required. Five, conformity with existing building alignment. Six, floor area ratio excessive. Seven, building height excessive for stories. Eight, front yard insufficient, and nine, side yard insufficient. As shown in the proposed plans, Unit 1 has 1,907 square feet of living space. There will be two bedrooms, two bathrooms with open floor plan on the main floor. There will be a master bedroom and study room in the basement. Unit 2 has 1,176 square feet of living space. There will be two bedrooms, two bathrooms with open floor plan. Unit 3 has 1,176 square feet of living space. There will be two bedrooms, two bathrooms with open floor plan as well. There will be a rooftop exclusive for Unit 3 that's accessible by hatch. I'll propose... I'll pause at this time to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Is there an existing curb cut?
Yes, there's an existing curb cut in driveway on the right side of the building. There's existing two parking spaces. I will only be adding one more.
Can you go back to the basement plan? Just trying to understand ceiling heights and windows in the basement.
Okay, ceiling height, if they bring up the plan for the basement proposed, that's it on the left-hand side. The house is on a hill, so the right side of the house has a slope. The ceiling height is at seven feet right now, roughly. And with the height of the building going to a three-family, it is under the maximum height, so the basement, the house can be lifted to accommodate eight feet of ceiling space in the basement and full-size windows on the right side where the master bedroom is.
And how do you access the basement?
Access the basement, there will be a staircase that goes from the first floor down to the basement. It'll be added... It'll also have a sprinkler system added.
And is there any walkout from the basement, or you go up through the house?
Yeah, there will be a walkout where it's down in the bottom right, the front right. There'll be stairs cut out, and there'll be a full-size door put in for the walkout from the basement.
But you walk upstairs. You can't walk out to the yard from the basement?
Yes, you can walk out to the right side of the building.
Okay.
If you look at the space that's on the right side.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other questions?
Did you say you're lifting the house in order to get eight feet of space in for the basement level?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. D'Amico?
Yes, Madam Chair, lady, and the members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Unless I missed it, I saw the parking area, but I didn't see any vehicles depicted on the parking area, which is very important because you have to take measurements of the vehicles themselves and make sure they have enough maneuvering areas.
Okay, if you pull up the... You pull up the rear of the building where you have the parking, the three parking spaces?
Yes, I see it. I'm sorry.
Someone scroll over. Right there.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, so the three parking spaces are there in the swing area. Goes up all the way to the back of the building. There's two parking spaces that are existing. So maybe that's why the... Maybe why, you know, Leonard didn't put the actual vehicles there?
We need to see dimensions on those parking spaces.
Okay.
Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our recommendation for this was approval with design review and to Ms. Panado's points. No building code relief, knowing that they need a minimum of 7.6 in the basement. We'd recommend approval with no building code. Also, for the record, Dorchester does not have a restricted roof structure district. I don't know why that was cited, but it does not have that regulation in there, so I just want to clear that up. But we're on record in...
And for Mr. Brown's sake, can you clarify what no building code relief means for that basement?
No building code relief?
Sorry, I'm asking Mr. Hampton just to clarify that for you.
Yeah, for anything, I believe, in Mr. Ray again, or Mr. Collins, please, if I'm wrong. Anything over a two-family, so three-family and above, you need a minimum of seven feet, six inches ceiling height in the basement.
So no building code relief means he cannot build in the basement, is correct?
On the plans that are currently shown at seven feet.
Yes.
And that's what his testimony indicated as well.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ashley Holmes, again, from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Some background information on the community process. 1000 Ave., office held in the Butters meeting back of 2022. Butters members from the Jones Hill Association showed support. I believe that the proposal stands in the best interest of the shared community. With that, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEcrean, City Council, Frank Baker's office. I'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Raj Michael Flaherty, Council going record in support.
Yeah. Have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval with BPDA design review, no building code relief.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of board.
Next, we have case BOA 1034997, with address being 120 Linden Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Can you identify yourself, put your address in the record, and proceed?
This is Morat Kiani.
Hello?
Hello?
Patience.
Oh, so what... What does that mean, bro?
Can we... Ms. Thomas, can you meet Mr. Brown?
I'm done? So...
Completed it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Travis. I was listening to you present, and I was like...
Jessica, can you meet Mr. Brown, so our next... All right, sorry about that. Please proceed.
Yes.
Yes.
Should I explain there? Yeah.
Yes, please, Mr. Aiken.
Yes, yes, I'm trying to legalize a basement apartment from three-family to a four-family. The basement unit is a very nice unit. There is no trace of a moist or water problem. And since the last neighborhood meeting with David Barron, I have... My electrician has separated public meter from... And brought another socket for a new meter. Now we have the room for five meter, five electric meter. And I enlarged the two window from the living room. They were like basement window. Right now, they are like thirty-two inch by forty-nine inch long on the living room area. It has three window, one is a small one and two large one. And that wall on the floor plan that shows, that is removed, and the living room now looks much bigger. That little hallway is added to it, that little on the back.
Can you confirm the height of your basement, sir?
Yeah, that wall right there on the living room, that has been removed with the door on it. Yeah, that was removed, and now the living room is much longer.
Sir, what's the height of the ceiling in your basement?
The ceilings are seven foot, seven foot one inch.
That's your basement height?
Yes.
And do we have any elevations? Because with basements, we want to see the elevations. Where the wind in relationship to the ground.
I thought in person, I brought some pictures, and also I brought some videos. But the elevation, what is the question? Maybe I could...
We want to see the relationship to the basement, to the ground level.
Yeah, basically, the...
We want to see it, though.
We want to see it. I don't have any elevation, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Would you suggest a deferral, Ms. Panado?
Yeah, and you're, you know, you also are violating the building code for the ceiling height. As you probably heard in the last case, seven foot six inches is the required height of any basement.
Well, that's the ceiling height, the existing ceiling height. And the building has actually, that apartment has three means of egress. That the living room has another egress, but basically has two means of egress. One from front and one from the back to the parking.
Mr. Hampton, he recommended approval with provisos, so can you elaborate on that since given the ceiling height?
Yeah, I mean, the extension of living space into the basement, we don't have a problem with. But we also put a proviso with no building code. But I would agree with Ms. Panado that since there are no elevations shown on this, not that I think anyone would deliberately give the board wrong information without the plan and showing the elevation, I think Ms. Panado is correct, and this should be deferred.
So I think with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Second.
I know, we're voting, Mr. Collins.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Okay, Ms. Panado. Yes. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Please work with the staff to make sure you provide the information we need for the next time. Thank you. Do we have a deferral date?
Yes, Ma'am Chair, we can defer to June 27th, if that would be enough time, or July 11th.
Mr. Kiani, do you have a preference for the June or July date?
I didn't understand, I'm sorry. Oh, do you want to come back? Yeah, I could come back, yeah.
In June, do you have a preference for June or July?
No, it doesn't matter. June is good, yeah.
Okay, so please, okay, I'm here.
Yeah, June 27th, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, next case?
Next case is BOA 1444249, with the address being 584 East Fourth Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, thank you. Good morning, members of the board, Chair, Madam Chair. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with business address of 350 West Broadway in Selas, Boston. I represent Casey Penny, the owner of the property located at 584 East Fourth Street in Selas, Boston, within an MFR multi-zoning, sorry, multi-family zoning residential sub-district under Article 68. Madam Chair, members, in August of 2020, the board approved the underlying ALT application here to change the building at 584 East Fourth Street from a one-family to a three-family. ISD subsequently determined that they missed a zoning violation on the original refusal letter. Side yard setback requirement for the approved third-floor rear deck. Purpose of this hearing is for the board to add the required relief if you see fits pursuant to the same plan. The deck or balcony in question is, again, on the third floor, it's just over sixty square feet. The plans being displayed now are exactly the same as the plans approved by the board in August of 2020. Nothing has changed. The depicted rear deck should have been cited not being set back three feet. The depicted rear deck should have been cited not being set back three feet from the side lot line. Again, nothing is changing here. This is simply a matter of perfecting the record for ISD. The permit has been issued, work has been done substantially complete, but no work, of course, has been yet done on this third floor deck. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Marancy. Any questions from the board? Hearing done. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. We had the applicant flyer, the area, just to kind of let the Butters know that they were going back before the board, that no real changes to the project were going to occur. We did not get any letters of concern, and I believe the applicant was also in contact with the Neighborhood Association as well. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support again due to feedback from neighbors and a good community process to respectfully request that the proponent continues to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, acknowledging the communal effort that went into drafting Article sixty-eight. The councilor would state that this is simply the addition of the the third floor deck from previously approved project, therefore the council would like to record support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Before we go to the next case, as we approached eleven AM, are there any withdrawals or deferrals being requested for the eleven AM timeframe? Hearing done. Move on to the next case, which is BOA 1428169 with the address of ninety-eight to one hundred F Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, seventy-five Arlington, Houston, Boston. I represent the owner of this property, Matt Jones, who's with us today. On the Architect of Record is Eric Zacherson. If we could enlarge to show that photograph in the upper left-hand corner, just to give you a sense of the existing properties. So ninety-eight, one hundred are currently separate deeded properties that my client has acquired both of them. And the proposal here is to combine the lot in order to create two units, but essentially two single-family homes. And to join the look of the properties at the front. These are important historic buildings. It's not technically a historic district, but this stretch of S Street has some lovely historic homes. And the plan here is to restore the sister image of these two homes so that it looks as one rather than the the hodgepodge of differential that exists now. So each of the structures will be a single-family residence in effect, and the front of the property will be restored so that it reads as as one, one building. Next slide. So on the plot plan, you can see that there's, you know, the what's left is right, the same buildings. Proposal includes construction of a one-story garage at the rear of the existing structures, which is similar to the building shown along Gold Street next door. It's a condo building with a garage on the ground floor and retention of that four-foot alley passageway. We worked very closely with the unit owners in the condo building next door to maintain and actually improve that condition by pulling away from the rear lot line. And I can show you on the existing elevations later that there's a hodgepodge of additions that were added to the back of this building that are all coming off. And instead, will be this one-story garage to mirror the existing condition at the condo building next door with the restoration of the two properties. Also, lower part of the screen, you see small proposed bump outs, which will show better on the elevations, but those are sort of entryways for each of the single-family structures from the garage area. Next slide. Yes, so this shows the proposed garage at the rear. By joining the properties, we're able to have, you know, a single lot, which will then be submitted to a condominium master deed, so functionally each unit will be one unit as part of a two-unit condo association with the garage being the shared common area. But each unit will have exclusive use of two parking spaces in the garage. There is the little bump out on each side, the mudroom on the left and a bit of the kitchen on the right on the Gold Street side, which again is an improved condition from the existing add-ons that currently exist. Also, on the left-hand side of the property at ninety-six F Street, we worked closely with that neighbor to maintain that passageway. We're actually granting her an easement because functionally that's access to her backyard and a desired access route to bring trash to the street side. So we worked with that owner and will preserve an easement for her. Next slide. On the right-hand side of the screen is the Level Two plan. There are two walkout terraces from each of the single units, and those terraces are on top of the proposed new garage. And then on the third level, there are two small balconies from each of the bedrooms on the upper level of those units. Next slide. Staircase elevations, next slide. So these are the proposed elevations. Upper left-hand corner is the view from Gold Street facing the side of the building. There's the one-story proposed garage with the walkout terraces on top and the small rear deck at the third level and the small bump out on the side of the house. On the upper right-hand side, the front of the building, again, will be preserved to maintain the unified appearance of the building. And dormer windows will be introduced to bring some light into that attic space where there will be bedrooms. Just scroll down a little bit so we can see the rest of the elevations. Other elevations, lower left-hand side will be the elevation from next door at ninety-six F Street. And then if you were standing in the condo building on Gold Street, that's the elevation of the property from that side of the property. Again, we worked closely with those unit owners and the sort of the blank wall at grade is the garage level. But that is the same condition of their building with the three, four-foot, three to four-foot passageway between the two properties. Next slide. This is the existing condition. So there is a curb cut on Gold Street, which will be maintained. It will be the curb cut for the garage. It's a two-car driveway currently, and you can see a number of sort of add-ons in the back of the building. Next slide. And the next slide. Yeah. So this is the existing conditions elevations. Upper left-hand corner, you can see there's sort of a box addition at the upper level with a side staircase that's all being removed. Behind number ninety-eight, there's a one-story box with a sloped roof. That's being removed. Upper right-hand corner is that side staircase that's coming off the building. And on the lower elevations, again, the various contraptions and additions over the years that have been added to the back are all being removed to create a much more consistent and unified look to the two structures to make them read as one. Our zoning violations are fairly straightforward. We need a conditional use permit for the walkout terraces on the roof of the garage. We're cited for front yard insufficiency, but of course, that's an existing condition, and there's no change to that condition. Side yard insufficiency, again, existing condition. We're actually improving it with respect to number ninety-six next door. And rear yard insufficiency, again, existing condition. And we're actually improving it by removal of some of those additions in the back and pulling the garage away from the lot line, working with the neighbors on Gold Street. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. LaCasse. Any questions from the board? Is Mr. D'Amico on to regarding the the parking?
Yes, Madam Chair, lady, I am on.
Do you have any comments or concerns?
Actually, no. I understand that the tandem parking, but the one thing that this was commercial, then I would have a problem with it. But since it's residential, I'm assuming that they'll discuss one with one another about movements of the vehicles. So I'm fine with that based on the fact it's residential and not commercial.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Any other questions from the board?
And just to Mr. D'Amico's point, each of those two parking bays will belong to one unit. So one unit will control access to the tandem condition. So it'll be an intra-household tandem situation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna Oates with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting for ninety-eight through one hundred F Street on January fourth, 2023. Multiple direct Butters attended the meeting, and the proponent answered all questions and responded to all concerns. We have received one letter of support, and the City Side Neighborhood Association is in support of this proposal because of how responsive the proponent was to addressing Butters' concerns. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support due to a good community process and work with the Butters. He respectfully requests that the proponent continues to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, acknowledging the communal effort that went into drafting Article sixty-eight and echoing the sentiments of Council President Flynn's office, Council Record in Support. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Yaney, Councilor, Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Council Murphy would like to go on support and would also like to echo the words of previous council offices to continue the community input and support. Thank you.
Luke, are you looking to give testimony here? If you're not, I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the BPDA provisos for design review and with attention to increasing the side yard setback for a minimum five-foot sidewalk.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Can I just ask one clarification question, Madam Chair, on the the five-foot side yard? I just want to make sure I understand that it's not with respect to the distance between number ninety-six and ninety-eight? Because there's no side yard on the Gold Street side. So I'm just trying.
No, Mr. LaCasse, what we're trying to have developers do, especially on these smaller streets in South Boston, is accessibility is becoming a real issue. And I don't know if those three ballers are still existing, but there's no way that someone needing accessibility down Gold Street could be able to make a pasture of property. So now with these smaller streets, the BPDA is asking that there be a minimum sidewalk requirement so that accessibility can be maintained.
Sidewalk.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, understood.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Thank you so much.
For the last two case, the last two cases of night due to hearing, our companion cases, first being BOA 1447633 with the address of forty-eight Montgomery Street. And the, along with that, is case BOA 1447667, the address also being forty-eight Montgomery Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Moran, attorney for the owner, Louis Lagone. We are seeking relief for a G card permit and also building code relief. In reference to the G card permit, the whole time this letter, Water and Saw stamped drawings and a letter of compliance from Water and Saw have been duly filed, meeting the requisites for the issuance of a G card permit. Madam Chair, you wish me to then address the building code relief?
Yes.
In reference to the building code relief, we are cited under Section ten eleven point twelve point two for access to the proposed roof deck requirement that it be a penthouse. We are proposing a hatch as access as a compliance alternative. The property is located within the South End Landmarks District. It is a contributing building to the accredited National Historic District. Adding a roof penthouse would distort the street profile, which is one of the identified criteria of the landmarks. The proposed hatch access complies with the zoning code. If a headhouse is proposed, a variance from the zoning code would be required. The hatch access is a common means of approved egress within the district and has been approved on numerous projects and is then deemed a safe condition alternative. The hatch access, we suggest, is an acceptable compliance alternative under Section thirty-four twelve, compliance alternatives. The renovated building will be fully sprinkled. No hazard to the occupants of the building will be presented by granting this variance. And the building will remain totally within all fire fighting equipment and safety vehicles. And since this is a gut reconstruction, renovation, all of the materials and workmanship must comply with new construction. Based upon that, we request a variance to install a hatch.
Thank you. Mr. Semenelli, do you have those letters?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, boss of Aller Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. May I have public testimony?
Hi, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Pierschel from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board on this matter. Our office has received no questions or concerns from the Butters. Just ask they coordinate any construction with other projects in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support due to good community process and no outstanding issues reported by neighbors of the or the civic group. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, Council Record in Support. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Yaney, Council, Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Council Murphy would like to go on support. Thank you.
Mike Luke, are you looking to give testimony here? I sent a request on you. Okay. Not sure. But then I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we vote, can we hear from the thing about sort of off-street parking and layout and maneuverability on this site?
Mr. D'Amico, are you on?
Yes, I am. I reviewed the plan, and it is doable. It might be kind of tight, but like I said before, with another case. It might be kind of tight, but like I said before, with another case, it's not uncommon for this type of design to be, you know, in operation. So I have no opposition to this.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, if we need two motions, the most would like-
Yes, we need a G-card, and we need a motion on relief.
So I'll make a motion to approve the G-card.
Actually, I'm trying to make this lady become, make me a panelist, but it's telling me-
Sorry, Jessica, can you-
The chat is disabled.
Cliff?
Yeah, who is speaking? Hi, who's speaking?
Someone named Cliff. Can you mute him so we can proceed? Thank you.
I'm sending a request to make you a panelist. You just have to pull it up once it appears on your screen.
Can you please mute him so we can proceed? Thank you, Jessica. Okay, sorry. Was there a second on the G-card motion?
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. May I have the next motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval with BPDA design review.
Mr. Anthony, is that, you need it?
We don't need design review on this.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, so you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the eleven a.m. hearings. First case being BOA one four three nine three five five with the address being sixty-eight Lake Shore Road. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, I am here. Attorney, good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Poggiini on behalf of the applicant for sixty-eight Lake Shore Road in Brighton. This is a sixty-eight Lake Shore Road is zoning is one F five thousand. The lot size is five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four square feet. I'm with here, I'm here with today Adriana Rojas, along with her partner, Etienne Dano, who are the owners of Lake Shore Drive. They purchased a single-family home almost ten years ago, and they're looking to update and renovate their living space. The proposed project is to demolish the existing one-car garage and sunroom attached to the existing, attached to the existing three-bed, two-bath, two-and-a-half-story home and erect a two-story addition on the right side of the home. The proposed addition will include two-tier, two-car tandem garage, two additional bedrooms, one on each floor, and two bathrooms, one on each floor. The first floor of the addition will also include an office space as well as a living room. Addition will also expand the front porch on the dwelling. So this home is currently sixteen hundred and fifteen square feet. The addition would bring it up to twenty-four hundred and seventy-seven square feet for a net gain of eight hundred square feet. If you look at our refusal letter from ISD, our only violation was an existing side yard violation where the minimum was ten. The proposed is at five foot two, five foot two, but that is existing as present today. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Poggiini. Any questions?
Growings are adequate.
Thank you. Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir, and see you.
Lovely. At this time, the Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board. I'm sorry, this is Frank Mendoza, Office of Neighborhood Services, also Brighton liaison. At this time, ONS would like to defer to the judgment of the board, but we would like to testify to the community engagement that this applicant underwent, namely reaching out to abutters and also reaching out to the local civic association, the Brighton Alson Improvement Association, the zoning chair of which I believe is on to testify right after me. We didn't hear very much opposition from abutters, mostly folks who reached out and wanted to see a copy of the plan, so the refusal letter, but didn't actually have any follow-up comments to make. There was a single letter of opposition which we forwarded to the board, and the board should have on file, but other than that, we're unaware of any significant opposition from either nearby abutters or from the community at large. With that said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Good morning, this is Marv McCray from Council Brayden's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Council to record record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Goems from the Brighton Alson Improvement Association would like to go on record in support. This is also consistent with other additions on Lake Shore Road as well, and it's keeping a homeowner of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. William, you looking to give testimony here? I sent a request on mute you. Go ahead.
No, I put in a request for twenty-three, twenty-seven seater, which will come up shortly.
We're going to give testimony here for this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thomas Manion, Council Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Council Murphy would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion vote for BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Is Mr. Shepherd on? I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have case BOA one four three eight four two three with the address being Five Delaney Circle. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Elon Myers, and this is my wife, Ellen Myers, property owners of Five Delaney Circle, presenting on behalf of ourselves. We purchased our home in two thousand and nine. We have lived in it since with our growing family, meaning that our family has grown, thank God, to five children, and expecting, we saw the need for additional space and hope to be granted relief to add in addition to our existing home. To describe our project, we're seeking to add two additions to our home. Firstly, we'd like to add bedrooms to the top floor by removing the roof of the second floor, raise the walls, and build a new roof, which you can see here in this image. This would add three bedrooms to our home as well as a bathroom. That can be seen here in this slide over here. Next slide, please. Secondly, we would like to extend the dining area of our first floor to the rear of our home. That extension can be seen here in this slide. For these additions, we are seeking relief in three areas. Number one is FAR, the maximum allowed FAR in our area is point five. Our home is currently at point three eight, and we are proposing a new FAR of point five eight, which is about four hundred square feet over. Number two is the stories height. Our current home is two stories, and we are proposing to add a third story. And number three is rear yard insufficient. The dining extension, which you can see in the next slide, would result in a setback of thirteen point seven feet, which is just under the required twenty-foot setback. Next slide, please. This is just the site plan where you can see where the rear extension, the proposed first-floor addition, it's just shy of a few feet on one side of the rear setback, as well as about just over six feet on the other side. Next slide, please. Just as a comparison to a neighbor that's right across from us, they recently were granted relief, also a home, in expanding their home to three stories and an FAR of point nine five, which is far more than our proposed addition. Next slide, please. Wanted to just give as far as the stories heights relief, believe that there's some special consideration regarding the topography of our home and the surrounding community. As you can see, our home is situated on a hill with the elevation continuing to rise behind our home. Next slide, please. And over here, you can see that from the entrance of our home to Rushmore Street, behind us, there's a difference in elevation, there's a gain of over twenty feet. So we feel that extending that additional story won't have a great impact on most of the neighbors around us. It won't appear to be towering structure as a three-story home may sound to be. Next slide, please. This is just an image taken from Rushmore Street, the street level, looking towards our home, which is in the center of the picture. So you can see that the current second floor of our home is level, more or less, with Rushmore Street. Therefore, adding a third floor would not really impact our abutting neighbors in terms of building height. Also, due to the position of our home in relation to east and west, adding a floor would only detract sunlight from the home that you see on the left, and they are not in objection whatsoever to our project and very supportive. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? All right, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza, also Brighton liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. This applicant had an abutters meeting and also met with the Brighton Alson Improvement Association. There were also a number of letters we received, which we forwarded to the board, fourteen in support, two in opposition. One abutter reached out and didn't ask to be forwarded to the board, but did mention a concern regarding the height in specific. Some of the abutters who were in attendance at the abutters meeting had similar concerns as well, a couple of those, and some of the other, most of the other abutters who were present and later wrote letters were in support. With that said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board, and I believe Annabelle Goems is on to testify, so that stands at the BAIA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, this is Marv McCray from Council Brayden's office. The councilor would like to express her strong support for this project. She appreciates that this project will allow the Myers to adopt their home to their needs and help them stay in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Annabelle?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Goems, the Brighton Alson Improvement Association. We voted to support this project. We do feel that the height will have little to no impact on the abutting neighbors, and we have support of the one that does, and we think it's important to keep a growing family in the neighborhood, so we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
No additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA, here with Madam Chair. At this point, we should ask if the, for the eleven-thirty hearing, if there are any requests for deferrals or withdrawals at this time.
William, are you looking to defer here? I sent a request on unmute you.
I am, thank you.
Yes, can you, I can start yourself?
I think, no, I'm sorry, Jessica, he was just, he elevated, he's the architect on eleven thirty-five, thirty-five, come on, that's-
My apologies.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, thanks. All right, well, doesn't sound like there's any-
Move forward then. The next case is BOA one four four seven one four six with the address of ten thirty-five to ten thirty-seven Commonwealth Avenue. This is also, this is an Article eighty project. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Attorney John Poggiini, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Poggiini on behalf of the applicant, Matt Pino and Joe DeJangy. With me this afternoon is William Lee from Monty French Architects, who will help with the presentation. As Mr. Stenbridge stated, this is an Article eighty project, ten thirty-five, ten thirty-seven Commonwealth Avenue in Austin, Brighton. Zoning is community commercial, too. The lot size is eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-three square feet. The proposal is to raise an existing structure. It's a one-story retail location, and you all remember the City Sport Retail Store. It's been vacant for about twelve years, believe it or not, over by BU, and construct an approximately new six-story building with fifty-five residential units and three thousand six hundred and fifty-three square feet of ground floor retail. And the fifty-five units will be comprised of, through the community, we have five three bedrooms, an average size of thousand twenty-four square feet, fifteen two bedrooms, eight hundred and ninety-eight seven square feet, twenty-one bedrooms, six hundred and sixty-two square feet, and fifteen studios. It's an average of four hundred and seventy-nine. This building will include a residential entry lobby and service spaces, zero parking spaces will be provided, and fifty-five bicycle spaces will be provided. Nine of the units, approximately sixteen point five percent, will be affordable at seventy percent AMI. The proponent's also making a fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollar contribution to BTD to support the Blue Bikes program in Austin, Brighton, and this was approved by the BPDA board on February sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Additionally, with respect to community benefits, the applicant has been working with Council Brayden's office on making a sizable donation to a park in their area, and he's working on that now. Violations, FAR two is allowed under the zoning code, we're four seven, height is thirty-five or sixty-eight. Parking is two per unit. We're not proposing any parking, and that came as a result of our Article eighty process. Same with the loading zone. Residential use is conditional in a multifamily, in a community commercial zoning sub-district, and then we have green belt old age, which you know is just another level of review. That's really it. We have, like I said, we went through a very lengthy process. We've worked extensively with the community. This building where it's located, there are much higher buildings than it, especially right behind it, and we went through, we met with the ACA, had great meetings with them. I think they're in full support and, you know, had separate meetings with the councilor and have done a tremendous community outreach. Are there any questions on this proposal?
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
My question, first question would be, what's the breakdown of the units? Is this like, I know you have not affordable, but is this more like for the college students or a lot of one-bedrooms, what's the breakdown of the units?
Good question. There is five three-bedroom units, and that was as a result of the community, because they wanted family-style units, fifteen two-bedroom units, twenty-one bedroom units, and fifteen studio units. So it's not geared toward a college student at all. This is more geared toward a graduate student, professionals living in the area that would like to have the trolley right in front of their building so that they could get in time. It's a perfect TOD development.
And my second question would be, you know, busy call now. What's the duration for construction, and have they chosen a G-sequence project?
They haven't. We have used Union in the past, the same developer, so I'm assuming that's the way he'll go on this as well. He's still going through the entitlement period and getting permits and approvals. And I would say the timeline of a building of this size, because one of the things that came as a result of the BPDA Article eighty process was they wanted us to preserve the facade of the existing structure, which we have done in these filings. So I would say probably about eighteen months of construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a couple of follow-up questions. It looks like maybe historically there was some parking, and there was going to be stacker parking, so just trying to understand exactly when that was reconciled with the notes that we have about the refusal and related to the BPDA approval and what we're seeing now. So can you just walk us through the history on that briefly?
Sure, David. They had, the BPDA, we had gone to the BPDA because they really, because of where this building is located, it's kind of a commercial area, they would, they really wanted us to have much more of a retail presence on that street, and they felt like because of its location right on trains and trolleys, that really there would be no need for parking. So that's why that changed and involved through the Article eighty process and after the Article eighty process, too, with further conversations with the BPDA.
Okay, so BPDA's comprised of that, and the community was in part two?
Yes, and we are initially, I think when it finally went, David, it was somewhere, I'm sorry, Mr. Aiken, it was somewhere around three parking spaces at the end, and the BPDA said at that point, you know what, it's kind of pointless to have those three spaces, you can use it as drop-off for deliveries and things like that. However, with respect to the parking, the- However, with respect to the parking, this building is a building that screams, "We don't need parking" because of this location.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. Another, two last questions. You mentioned about the three bedrooms and being family-sized units, but what is the intent of actually leasing those to families? How does the proponent, I guess, intend to not lease those to unrelated individuals? If that's the intention, that they're family units? Just curious how they intend to manage that. It's not a zoning piece, per se, but when we get those comments about that, I think there's a divergence, perhaps, sometimes, from how they're actually operated.
Right, and that's another good question. So throughout the process, as you guys are, you know, aware of, when you go into the community, you're proposing different-sized units, everybody is looking for family-style units, especially in an area like Austin Brighton, where we have many more small units and not many large. So the goal is, and one of these will be designated affordable as well, the goal is to market these toward families and not toward, I mean, it's gonna be a beautiful, nice building. We don't, they don't have any anticipation to rent it out to undergraduate students that would in any way, you know, destroy a building or just not treat it as the same as somebody who is maybe a little bit more mature and, you know, understands that they're living in a nice building.
Thank you. I guess the video will serve as record of that. And then, very last, it looks like, based upon the mitigation in the Article 80, this contribution for parks was not part of that. So is that something new that's come up?
It is. So we had met with, the reason why that happens is when you're exceeding affordability like we are, the community benefits can sometimes be dismissed on that. But Mr. Panino and I had conversations, and I believe Marva McRae from Council Braden's office is on this call, to designate some money outside of this toward, and a sizable amount of money. This guy lives in Brighton, he's lived there his whole life. He's done several other developments there. He understands this is not going to be his last project, so he would like to work well with the community. So we've had some conversations with the council's office about making a sizable donation to a park, which they are very involved with.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So for the proponent, your project is providing nine income-restricted units, correct?
That is correct.
And all of the units are for 70% of the area median income? So my question, what is the reason why the project is not allowing some of those units to have different levels of affordability? I'm thinking about all the families who are under 30%, 40%, 60% of the area median income, and they don't have an opportunity to get access to the homes that you are proposing. So why all the units are 70% and not lower than a mix of incomes?
And there was, you know, normally, when you're going through the Article 80 process, a condominium would be 80% AMI, and an apartment would be 70% AMI. That's what the traditional thing is. So this was negotiated when we were preparing for the BPDA Board. And obviously, giving more than the 13% affordability was something that factored in that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services, Austin Brighton liaison. Just wanted to testify that as part of their community engagement process, this applicant reached out to the Austin Civic Association. Earlier this morning, the board should have received a letter of support from the Austin Civic Association regarding this proposal. With that said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Marva McRae from Council Braden's office. The council would like to go on record and support this project. She supports this project because it will replace a currently vacant storefront and will provide housing in an excellent transit-oriented location. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Minor, you also?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Chris representing the Carpenters Union. On behalf of hundreds of Boston residents, I want to go and represent our project. And kudos to Mr. Pugini and his team for great community outreach and working over the neighborhood.
No additional raised hands, we've heard from everyone. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with a proviso that they, I think, provide some satisfactory evidence regarding the contribution needed for the part piece, since that was not picked up in the BPDA approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Could I just interrupt for one second, Mr. Aiken? Also, you, I'm assuming you want a BPDA design review on this as well, correct?
That's correct. It's an Article 80 project, sorry.
It's Article 80. Yeah.
Sure, you can put that, we can.
If you'd like it as an official proviso, yes.
We can keep consistency and have it as a proviso, sure.
Sure. Did I have a second, sorry? Second. Okay, thank you. Mr. Collins? Miss, are you on mute, Mr. Collins?
Muted.
You are on mute, sir.
I don't see him.
I do, I do see him, but he's on mute. I'll keep going.
All right, well, God, I'm juggling the phone and the drawings on the computer, but yes, I am, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Schump?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
You.
Next case is BOA 1407798, with the address being 27 to, 23 to 27 Cedar Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Hello, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jennifer Ha from Key Architecture. My office is in Dorchester, Mass. I'm here to represent the owner Cynthia Cuevas and Oakland Lopez, Vanessa and Carl DeGeir, on the project at 23, 25, 27 Cedar Street in Matapan. This, the site is an existing one-and-a-half-story, three-family townhouse with two car, two tandem car park in the driveway. The applicants are proposing a third-story addition to the house as well as expanding the decks and porches, and as well as adding three, oh, sorry, adding six parking spaces on the lot to the rear of the building. You can go to the next slide. Here, you can see the existing building to the left and to the right is the proposed. We will retain the existing first floor and basement, and footprint of the building will remain the same. We are adding on top of it one, another one-and-a-half stories. In the front elevation, you can see that that is consistent with the neighbors in terms of height and style. And you can see in the next slide. Thank you. That the rear of the building is, because of the large dormer, is a three-story. And so that is going to be the same position as where the existing deck is in the left picture. It's just that the decks will be expanded to the left and right so that each unit will also have their own privatized deck. And so, and you can look at the next slide, please. Thank you. Here, you can see the existing units are set up so that they're split, 23, 25, and 27. Their basements will remain the same. The first floor will also remain the same. It's an open kitchen and dining and living room space with a bathroom. The second floor will remain pretty much the same. It was a two-bedroom. What we did is added another bathroom. And then the biggest change is the third story, where that will become a, a primary bedroom with en suite bathroom and walk-in closet. The existing units before were 820 square feet, two-bedroom, one-bath. And now the new proposed units are three bedrooms, two-and-a-half bathrooms, and each unit is roughly 1,200 square feet. So the design here is designed for families to live here. Now you can go to the next slide. Here, you can see that in the front, we have individualized front porches in the front facade, and small dormers on the attic floor. And then the rear elevation, you can see the full dormer and then the full, as well as individual decks in the back. You can go to the next slides. So here, sorry, we can talk about the, the, yes, sorry, the variances we are seeking. So the existing building has, is a non-conforming building so that the setbacks is, on the, on the front is allowed 15 feet, but we have existing five-feet setback. The side yard setbacks allow 10 feet. We have an existing one-foot-seven-inch setback. The building height allowed is two-and-a-half stories. We're proposing three stories because of the rear dormer. And then the FAR allowed is 0.5, and we're proposing 0.55. We can go, we can go to the next one, please. Oh, the next slide, sorry. Thank you. And then this is, this is just the plans that were submitted for ISD. So it's, it's going to be a repeat of the information I just presented. We're open to questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can you discuss any landscaping, buffering, and address whether there is a fair amount of paving here, too, right, for the new parking?
Yes. So that's a very good question. So we went through an intensive community process that started in October last year, and a lot of the changes in the landscaping actually is represented here. So we had, first presented actually three parking spaces, one per unit. But through the neighborhood process, this is a very congested street. So that's why we had added three more parking spaces. So what is going to happen is that the one and two in the front, that's going to belong to unit 23. So they're tandem spots, but therefore one unit. The parking for three and four is tandem, tandem parking spaces for the middle unit 25. And then, start, I think, I'm sorry, I think I said the numbers wrong. Five and six is tandem for 23, and three and four is for 25, and one and two is for 27. And I want to add that because we had added these parking spaces and added more pavement, that's where we're proposing permeable, pervious surfaces for one and two, that's closer to the rear neighbor, and also for four and six, which is closer to the rear neighbor. And so those specifically will be gravel or pervious surface. And they also, we have added EV charger for the, those two parking spaces, four and six. There is also an additional driveway easement when you enter into the existing driveway, that we're allowing number 29 to 31, abutter, to use that driveway as an easement to access their driveway.
Yeah, it just feels like an excessive amount of parking. And what about removal of trees on this site? Can you address that?
Yes, there is one, I'm not sure if you can see my finger, I guess I can use my mouse. Yes, if you can see my mouse, there is a large tree that's, oh. Okay, there is a large tree, I'm not sure if you can see my mouse, but in the rear, where one and two is. And there's also some trees that are in the back, where the parking three and four is. So at the request of the rear abutter, we will be removing those large trees because they're not in great condition. But instead, we will be planting a buffer of trees in the rear, towards the rear neighbor, as well to the side, towards 17 and 19. So this would be an environmental buffer, as well as a privacy buffer between the lots.
Can you speak to your, the context? It looks like a lot of one families surrounding you. Could you just talk about your three family?
Yes. So to the right of us is a two-family townhouse. To the left of us is a two-family townhouse, so 29, 31, 17, and 19. To the front of us is a two-family townhouse, and then diagonally in front of us is a two-family townhouse. So this is, there is a, there is a four-family that is diagonally across the street behind another building. And there is also, most of them, I think, are like a single-family zone, but there are some two families around us.
Any other questions?
So if you look in the Google view, you will see that our abutters, so I guess in this view, that there is two and a half, most of our neighbors actually are all two-and-a-half stories that are against Cedar Street. Across the street as well will be two-and-a-half story. So we will be consistent in terms of height and style.
Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony? Jessica, are there raised hands?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. There was a lengthy community process with this. We heard from many abutters in support and in opposition. We received 33 letters in support and 20 in opposition, including from the River Street Civic Group. The Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council did vote to support this proposal with two provisos, that during design review, the mass in front of the building be worked on and reduced, as well as reduction of tandem parking as well for the site. There were some concerns expressed by the proponent about some community members being pressured to oppose. But with that, that should cover the full testimony. We defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the elected officials' office?
Yes, I'm here, representing Councilor Brian Royal. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayemi Day Olmoyua, from the City Council of Royal's office, in regards to 23 to 27 Cedar Street. The applicant did receive 32 total letters of support and one from Greater Lower Mills. And they did receive one letter of opposition from River Street Civic. Despite all of that, they did actually hold three different voting sessions, so two for River Street and then one for Greater Lower Mills. And they did four abutters meetings throughout their entire process up until today's date. And with that being said, the council would like to defer to the discretion of the board for more community engagement possible.
Thank you. Michael Dowar?
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Michael Dowar. I live at 10 Cedar Street, diagonal to the property. I've been to, I think, all four of the meetings, the abutter meetings. And universally, it's been almost, almost 100% opposition from the people that actually live on Cedar Street. So what I heard the presenter before say about all the support that's been given, but it's been primarily from people that don't live on the street. Cedar Street is a very narrow street. Parking is actually pretty dangerous on one side of the street. My cars, I live on the opposite side of the street. My car's been struck multiple times, so I have to park on the other side of the street. Parking is a huge problem here, and if you throw in some snow, it's going to be all bets are off. I feel like the developer has not listened to the people that live on the street. We've asked numerously that this be converted to a two-unit instead of a three because most of the homes here are single-family homes. There's a few that are duplexes and one multifamily up the street. But it's primarily, it's not congruent with the homes that are in this area. And I say this as, actually, as a developer, I'm also a Realtor. I've developed 10 homes myself. Because my dad would say, it's like putting 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. This house should not be a three-family house, it should be a two-family.
Thank you. All right. So we have to get to as many people as we can. William Jeffers, are you going to give testimony here? Can you briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition? Zoom user, I have to request unmute you. Are you looking to give some testimony? Okay.
Yes, I'm here. I'm noticing, I'm looking at.
I'm sorry. Yep, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, can you state? This is William Jeffers at 45 Cedar Street.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm looking at a, at the refusal letter, another copy of a refusal letter that's also showing violations of Article 9, Section 1, and Article 65, Section 65 dash 41.5, which don't seem to be referenced on today's agenda. And I was wondering if these are also being voted on for relief at this time.
I mean, we're just here to take testimony at this point, so we can. Are you, are you here to speak in support or opposition, Mr. Dowar?
Well, I'm in opposition because if it's, you know, there hasn't been a full discussion of, it's violation of Articles 9, Section 1. It's more than a 25% increase of an extension of a non-conforming building. And I don't believe that that has been fully discussed, and I do not support that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Zoom user?
Yes.
Yeah, can you state your name and address for the record, please? And please briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition and give new. And please, um, briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition and give new information?
My name is Curtis Wilson, um, twenty-nine and thirty-one Cedar Street.
Okay.
Yes, and I am in full support. I think that they have, um, took up all our concerns, parking, um, pest control throughout the build, um, tenant offer to buy option, um, new fencing, um, some tree removals, some trees that, um, other neighbors have had, have busted through fences and done some stuff. So they're going to take care of that fencing and the trees. Um, nice new landscape for privacy. Um, and, um, any concern that pops up, um, they've been right there. If you have a concern or you need something done to, um, help, you know, like I said, the privacy with the landscape, they're on board right away once you tell them. Um, there was a lot more support, um, in the beginning and due to some, um, neighbors with certain opinions and strong opinions, it has drove some people away from support. Um, but I think it's a great project and there are a lot of people in support.
Thank you. Okay, Francine, can you state your name and address for the record?
Hi, yes, this is Francine Dancy Carruthers. I am directly in back of this. Um, my blood pressure's up behind this. I'm going to start with Curtis, who just got off the phone, or, uh, just got offline. I live right in back of Curtis. We see each other a lot. He informed me that they would text him, and excuse me, Curtis. They would text Curtis during the meeting to take and tell Curtis what to take and say. So all that information that Curtis just took and said, they text him to say that. Am I correct, Curtis?
Ms. Francine, can you focus on your, your position?
I'm sorry?
Please focus on your, your position, thank you.
My thing is, there has been over eighty-something people on the meetings that are against this. This is directly in my backyard. Sturbridge Street is, uh, Cedar Street sits up a little higher than, uh, Sturbridge Street. So we're down like in a valley or a ditch. So within this building being sky-high in my backyard and all the other neighbors that are on Sturbridge Street, this is what we're, we're taking and looking at. As, um, um, as the woman stated before, the designer, the architect, she had said the front of it will be equal in height, but the back of it will take and be higher than everything else. So, and in terms of parking, six cars in the backyard and, and my fence is right there, that's all of that within my backyard. There are a lot of neighbors or most of the neighbors take and sit in their backyard during the summer, during the spring, kid, the kids are running around. So they have these cars all within the backyard. In addition to, it is a small backyard. I know you all have the footage and everything, but to have six cars back there and then let's go into top chopping down trees. They have to do at least six, uh, trees have to be cut down in the back. And with the roots of the trees, I don't know how they're taking and doing.
Do you please wrap up, ma'am? Thank you.
Oh, okay, but all of that has to take and, uh, go into my yard. So as they take and do all of this, all the, my backyard has to be demolished or dug up as well.
Thank you.
So I am a.
All right, I have no idea. Okay, thank you. Uh, would the applicant like to respond to that before we make a motion?
Uh, yes, so, um, in regards to one of the butters, um, the support that we have, we have thirty-three letters of support. Um, they're all within the three hundred feet of the project, but actually eighteen of those letters are from Cedar Street itself. So they're all, and a lot of them actually are direct butters. Ten letters are from one block distance, um, and then five letters are from two blocks distance. There are no letters of support that's from three or four blocks distance. These letters of support were not acknowledged by River Street Neighborhood Association as part of their vote. And I, for, um, for, to reference, um, sorry, to respond to Francine, the, so that there will be trees that will be taken out that was talked about with Francine and a couple of meetings. And of course, anything that is on her yard or any, um, problems that would happen from digging up those trees, that we will work with her. The, the owners have actually, um, has her contact. And before they do anything, it has to be agreed with her before they actually even put in the fence. They will consent with, get her consent about even the fence to make sure that everyone's aligned.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a, yes, sir?
I guess I'd just like to overall comment that the building appears, um, at least in renderings, to be a nice building. Uh, these don't seem completely out of context. I'm a little bit concerned about the, the site plan, um, with all of the asphalt. Uh, I realize a couple of the, the requests are for existing conditions because you're reusing the building. Um, but I guess I just want to throw that out to there to fellow members of the board that I'm a little bit troubled by the number of trees that are being taken down. Uh, there's been a number, it looks like, that have been taken down over the years. That's not part of the case here now, but you know, what the litigation is for some of the landscape and, uh, all the asphalt and parking areas. And certainly some of the, uh, context of the feedback that we've here heard from some of butters, it's not quite clear, though, do what the level of support really, really is or isn't at this juncture. So not offering a motion at this time, just some thoughts.
Okay, well, with that, I still need a motion. May I have a motion and, uh, any provisos that anyone would like to include with their motion?
I'm sorry, I, I mean, just based on the comments from the butters and my colleagues at the zoning board, I'm thinking about the excessive parking. And I would like to put forward a motion to approve the project with the proviso that the parking is reduced from six parking units, from six parking spots to three parking spots.
A second.
Uh, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I'm sorry, would be the ADs in review as well?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, okay, so we have a motion to approve with a proviso to reduce parking from six to three and BPD was on review and we have a second. Uh, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members.
Thank you, please continue to work with your neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-three, one-nine-zero-eight. The address is seventy-four Corona Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, can you introduce yourself, uh, put your name, uh, name and address on the record and?
Chris. Not a problem, just, so good afternoon, Madam President, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Henry, Brooklyn Construction, also a firm in Realty. Um, here representing seventy-four Corona Street. The owner is Norm Wallace and Leroy Wallace as well. This is a three-family renovation that we're doing. Uh, Norm Wallace has owned the property since, like, nineteen ninety-nine. It was a three-family, three beds, one bath each unit. Last year, February fifth, um, the house caught on fire to place the three families. So what we did, we actually went through and upgraded the whole property, installed a sprinkler system, fire alarm and water tanks in the basement. Um, three beds, two baths, central AC, wash and dry unit. But now we're trying to install potential rear egress in the back. It was all about increasing safety. After that fire last year, the owners were, they had someone that got injured and they were close to the family, so they wanted to create a access to get out right down into the, okay, four feet in the side yard and graveyard space, as you can see here, proposed. So right now, we're looking for, to increase the safety.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Fair and sound good.
Thank you, sir.
You're saying the work has already, the work's already been done? It's just now for the, the work's been done in terms of the, the units? It's now just the, the egress?
Yes, it's just the egress that needs to be done.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Actually, going to Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office did hold an abutters meeting in the beginning of March. Uh, fewer butters in attendance at that date. We're concerned, Chair, at the moment, the civic, um, of that area, United Neighbors has not had a chance to vote on the project thus yet. Uh, due to scheduling with that, we would like to defer judgment to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor Rorwell's office?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, with this project, the developer, um, was not able to appear before the, uh, local civic, which was the, uh, United Neighborhood Association. And, um, the leader would like to invite them to, uh, come to their meetings coming week in order to engage with the community and, um, maybe flesh out any concerns that the neighborhood may or may not have. Um, with that being said, the council would like to defer to the board.
Thank you. We have another hand here. Leroy, um, can you state your name and address for the record and let us know briefly if you're in support or opposition?
Uh, my name is Leroy Wallace. My address is seventy-four Corona Street. Uh, that's my house. Um, and correct, the gentleman spoke and I've owned that house since nineteen eighty-four. Um, so I know my neighbors, I know the new neighbors. I've been there my whole life. And, um, I've tried to get in contact with Brian Rorwell's office for a plethora of reasons. And I never get any feedback from him. Maybe I'm not qualified enough, but I try to get in contact with him as much as, uh, last week. A lot of plethora of issues. Um, this project can't go on any further because I have a seventy-four-year-old mother that needs a place to live. So, uh, civic association or not, I mean, I know all my neighbors and my neighbors have no problems with this. And that's on my street, on Geneva Ave, and streets parallels to this.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Jessica, are there any other raised hands? Raised hands, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why there haven't been any meetings with the civic association.
So we had met with Bowden Street Association, um, and that's what, that we were going through to have our meeting with. And then I guess it was understood it was going through, that's, that the Bowden Street Association had approved it. Um, again, this was all about safety, the biggest piece on there. It wasn't about making anything larger, having a rear egress to come outside. So it was four feet we're looking for, bring off. And after the fire, it's, that's been the biggest thing.
Yes, so this is, I mean, I heard Bowden Street, but then there was another group that was also requested your presence. Why haven't you met with them?
Um, sorry, I was trying, sorry. There was just a mishap in the overlapping of the civic association since there's so many and so close in the area. Um, but they are looking to present to them this week, um, for feedback.
Yeah, I mean, it is a pretty minor staircase addition that's probably required.
Yes, uh, and, and just, there is, there is a lot of support from Oldman Geneva Main Street. Uh, and somebody else who seems to be in a butter. We do have an additional raised hand. I'm not sure if you want to take it if we're done with testimony. I'm sure. Want to take it, okay. Thumbprint, um, can you state the name and address for the record? If you tell us if you're in support or opposition for the proposal?
Thank you, thank you. My name is Alexey Edwards. Uh, I actually own a, a home on Westville Street, which in its, uh, street over. Um, I'm definitely in favor with this particular project. Um, if, if James, the contractor, leave this, leave it original size, it will be hard for First, um, commanders to, to, to come in and, and get to this particular property if it's another emergency. So I applaud them to, to, to try to make this egress a little bit bigger. So, uh, First responses could actually get into the back, um, the back, uh, egress and the front egress, um, easily. Um, it, it, I've been through a fire and I know when I'm, you know, putting up, renovating again, I want to make it easy, um, to avoid, um, a, a fire or make it easy for those to come save, um, anyone in the house. So I, I really applaud them to try to, to make this, this porch a little bigger, spend a little bit more money. But at the end, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a greater chance for everyone to be safe and get taken out of the house if an emergency occurs again.
Thank you.
We're talking about four feet. So I, I definitely applaud this and applaud James and, and I, I agree, uh, with this four feet.
With, with that, is there any additional questions from the board? Okay, may I have a motion?
A motion approved. Do you have a design review?
Second. Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-one, one-zero-five-seven, with the address of six, six-thirty Dorchester Avenue. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Charles McCarthy, the owner of the property located at six-thirty Dorchester Avenue in South Boston. This is an application to add a garden-level fourth dwelling unit to this existing three-family dwelling. The lot size is two thousand seventy-nine square feet and the zoning is an L-one local business district under the nineteen sixty-four base code. This is not Article sixty-eight, South Boston. The, uh, most relevant plan sheets here, uh, are page C-zero-one, uh, which includes renderings, the floor plan of the unit in question, which is page A-zero-one, and then the building cross-sections, which are A-zero-six and A-zero-seven. The lower level of this building had been previously built out. It was occupied by a commercial business. Uh, it was, I believe, a seamstress shop most recently. Uh, and the property was actually assessed for a period of time as a mixed-use residential, commercial property. My client purchased the building and considered, um, simply making unit one a bi-level unit. Uh, but in that case, there would have been potentially at least six bedrooms in such a unit. Uh, the proposed new unit, by contrast, would be a one thousand two hundred eleven square foot three-bedroom unit. This is shown on, uh, sheet A-zero-one. Uh, this is not a proposed basement unit and has not been cited as such by ISD because the unit is at least fifty percent add or above grade and it is a full walkout in the rear. Also, the building is not located within a flood hazard area nor within a coastal flood resilience overlay district. The floor-to-ceiling height in the unit ranges from eight to nine feet. With respect to the requested zoning relief, a variance is thought for insufficient lot area for the additional dwelling unit. As I mentioned, this site is governed by the base code, not Article sixty-eight. Uh, the old code requires a minimum five thousand square foot lot for only one unit, for four units, it would require an eight thousand square foot lot. Uh, the size of this lot, as I mentioned, is just over two thousand square feet, which makes the variance necessary. Code also requires four hundred square feet of usable open space for the new unit, but there is no way to create open space on the lot since there is already a building here. Uh, the only way to do that would be to add a roof deck. And my client elected not to propose a roof deck given neighborhood sensitivities on that subject. There's no way to add parking to the site, of course, so there's zoning violation and relief requested for insufficient off-street parking. But I would point out that the building is located just across Andrew Square from the MBPA's Andrew Station. Finally, there's a violation for excessive floor area ratio. The maximum FAE, FAR here is one. Uh, what is being proposed is two-point-five. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Maranci. Any questions from the board?
I have a question in the fact that the notes from the BPD indicated that this is in the coastal, uh, flood resiliency, but I believe Attorney Maranci said it's not. Is that what I heard correctly?
I believe, yes, that's what, I believe it is not. Uh, I am referencing the zoning refusal letter. Even if it were, uh, it is not subject to Article twenty-six and it's not an Article eighty small project. And, uh, uh, so, you know, it, it, it wouldn't be subject to the requirement. And so, you know, it, it wouldn't be subject to the requirements of CEPRAD even if it were.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Our office held an abutters meeting in early March. There was one abutter in attendance who expressed some concerns about the lack of parking proposed with the proposal. The outcome explained that the previous use for this area was a tailor, which also led to an increasing number of vehicles coming in and out of the square. Other members that were on for the abutters meeting were in support of the proposal. And they eventually went on to meet with the Andrew Square Civic Group, which did not express any concerns. We also received several letters of support, which I believe have been forwarded to the board, as well as a petition in support with signatures from nearby abutters. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEckren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Councilor Lodge Michael Flaherty. Council to go on record in support.
Andrew Square Civic?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and ZBAA, BPDA members. My name is John Pikatowsky, lifelong resident, small business owner in Andrew Square. Also, I serve as ASCA Development Committee Chair. I would like to thank Mr. McCarthy for his engagement of the community process in addressing any quality of life concerns the proposal may bring. There's our opinion that the requested relief will have no negative impact on the surrounding area. We are in full support.
Thank you. And I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the BPDA design review as they requested it? They, BPDA requested--
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins? Are you unmuted again? Yes, you are. All right, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. All right. One more case before. You're welcome.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I want to correct my testimony. This is within CEPRAD. I put this into chat. It is not subject to CEPRAD, so I apologize for the misstatement. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you. Last case before break. Mr. Stenbridge.
Then let's get right to it. BOA-- BOA 1435496. The address is 489, 489 A East Broadway. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Is Mr. Walsh present?
Oh, sorry, I have a few raised hands here. Robin and Matt, are you guys here for this proposal? I sent a request to unmute you.
Correct.
Okay, both of you?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Let me just, I'm going to make you a panelist, which will mute you for a second. Then you can unmute yourself and then state your name and what you're looking to do.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for hearing us today. My name is Matt Doyle. I'm here with Candace Kates for Gillis. We are currently traveling right now, so we are in the car. We represent the owners at 49 East Broadway, White Street Coffee. We have three other locations in Boston, two in Beacon Hill and one on Boylston. We are looking to create a cafe here with to-go food and, and coffee. It's fairly simple build-out. We are, you can see from the drawings there, if you just go to the construction plan. We're looking to put in 18 seats. Majority of this is to-go traffic. We will put in an ADA restroom. We have full pest control. We have garbage pickups throughout the week.
Yeah, so they said operating seven to five, no food prepared on site, just identical operation to the existing three. Local vendors used where possible. And as Matt stated, trash pickup is all stored inside until pickup overnight.
Thank you.
Sorry?
What's there now?
Right now, it is, it was a, it was a jewelry shop, so it was commercial and turned over into a real estate office.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Our office had the applicant flyer to a butters within 300 feet. We did receive word from one abutting business owner who expressed opposition due to concerns with trash, double parking from people using takeout, as well as concerns that work might have done, been done on the site ahead of time. Beyond that, we did not hear from any other residents. The applicant did go on to meet with the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, which I understand the Gate of Heaven offered their full support with the project. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on our community process. We respectfully ask that the proponent continues to work closely with neighbors on any quality of life issues. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Let's take a 15-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you.
Good luck.